I'm reading the nineteen ninety and it's it's located on the property.
Okay.
Limited to thirty-three. So, I I mean Bob, did the did the number of vehicles on the property strike you as that voluminous? I'm not, I wasn't expecting you to give a count on a given day, but.
I didn't count, but you know, it's it's a fairly large site and I didn't actually observe all of it. So it would be difficult to say, um, yeah, there were quite a few vehicles. I mean, thirty, thirty, thirty-three, I really couldn't say.
I understand. Other than the restriction on the number of vehicles, I don't view any of the other restrictions within the nineteen ninety special permit as continuing on to this point in time. Uh, Bob, I'm sorry to put you on the spot again, and I'm going to ask that of my fellow board members as well. But but do you agree with that or am I missing something?
No, I think the, you know, the focus of that special permit was on the sort of ancillary smaller businesses that were uh, being allowed to operate on the site and that's that's not happening anymore.
Right, and so that's that's really the first thing in opinion I I wanted to put forth. That that the nineteen ninety special permit, i- in my view, lives on really only with respect to that maximum of thirty-three industrial vehicles.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking through it now and I would I would have to agree with that.
And then I I would also feel that I we obviously, some folks are gonna wanna talk about trucks being operated before seven AM. And I don't think anyone disagrees that trucks should not be operated before seven AM. The business should not be operating before seven AM, at least outside or in an area that would be creating noise. I don't necessarily wanna spend a lot of time in the public comment talking about that because it's it's non-negotiable. Well, we know they can't have them before seven AM. You know they can't have them before seven AM. If they have them before seven AM tomorrow or a year from now, that's a violation that will have to be dealt with at that time. I'm sure that they have operated before seven AM in the past and it's been dealt with. We have a copy of a police report. I'm sure they've been operated before seven AM in the past and they haven't been dealt with. But we have a lot of people here, we have a lot of applications to get through and a lot of other things to talk about. I don't think we should spend that much time on that. All right, we got the number of trucks, we got the seven AM. Bob mentioned the conservation agent. The conservation agent just did an inspection. There may have been something that would have concerned the conservation agent of some time ago that isn't going on now. I don't wanna spend a lot of time talking about that in when we get to public comment. Or what might happen in the future, that's honestly not the purview of this board and not within this board's expertise. I think I've said enough. Ed, uh, do you have any more questions for the applicant, for Bob, or anything to add to what I said? Or contradict it, please, I I I wanna get this right.
I I basically um concur with your assessment about the ninety-one um special permit and the accessory or the ancillary um activity of the tenant activities. Um, I think the fundamental, the underlying aspect here is that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use um, that has been uh maintained uninterrupted to the best of my knowledge um, since uh Alan Wheeler days. And I think that that's um, that's the underlying reason why we're here. Um, I know sometimes the public would like to see these pre-existing non-conforming uses disappear. Um, however, the law doesn't allow that to happen um without, there would be a taking without compensation. So I think we need to be thoughtful of that in the process of discussions as well.
Absolutely.
Anthony, could I uh just uh say a few things follow up on Bob?
Absolutely, so e- everyone is aware, uh, this is Neil, Doug, and also our building department.
Presentation, really complicated matter. But I just wanted to point out, um, early on, Bob and I um met with Mr. Spass on two two separate occasions um out at the site. Yeah, I think it was intent of uh discussing uh, you know, some settlement with the neighbors where, you know, we could tone down some of the operations perhaps and maybe move some of the operations to a different part of the site. Uh fencing, some burns, things of that nature. I think the justification for that is this is a pretty non-conforming use with a clear intensification that new building, um, that is a clear uh, you know, intensification that I I think the board under the bylaw has a, is can allow um if it sees it as a uh more restrictive view. Uh, I think a here a intensification of, just say they want to acquire some more property in the neighborhood and expand their operation. I I really think that was probably required of airing. So I think we're looking at how can we make this more restrictive views um with your building. Um, and I think, and I, the suggestions of this is to be willing uh to provide some mitigating. And I think, you know, turning lights for the butters and doing things like fencing and burn. Last time we spoke, uh, I think we're good on this. That's that's my two cents.
You know, just so we have a a sense, a approximately when was this last time you spoke with the applicant about some additional fencing and burns and such?
Weeks ago, week ago.
Okay.
More like, more like last week. Well, I, yeah, I would, I would second Neil, he's absolutely right and accurate in what he, what he says.
Uh, George, anything to add, any additional questions?
Just, I'm just confirming um that this is both and with the D P commentary that you made uh acknowledged, this is in both a water resource protection district and a floodplain and watershed protection district?
Uh, yes.
Correct, I did, cuz I want it on on the record that uh that, but I just wanted to confirm that. Um, that's it.
Important to consider in that regard is our level of review due to its inclusion of those districts is required to be limited to this building that is in question and not the use overall that ship has sailed and not the other buildings on the site, which I also, that ship has sailed. Um, I want to double back. Well, I guess first, uh, this is big counsel. Let's talk about that additional fencing, screening and mitigation that it sounds like you discussed with our building department in the last week or two. I, where did you come out on that? What's in the works? What might be in the works? Uh, what's the word?
Um, so I I had agreed that I would be happy to put a burn up along the property line, a budding or, let's see, let me open it up. A budding the uh property of that that I owned next door uh with Gene Mullin uh along that that side, so that it will screen some of the view of the the operation.
And this would be to the southeast as you head down towards Countryway?
Yes, correct.
Further up Stockbridge, yes. Okay, um. Let's put that aside for a second, back to the purpose of this building. Cuz the way that I'm looking at this is we have a pre-existing non-conforming use that, you know, to cut to the chase, none of, all of your neighbors which wasn't there, or many of your neighbors which wasn't there. It's allowed to be there. A twenty-four hundred square foot building, you're looking at one way, that's an intensification or an increase in that non-conforming use. There is gonna be the argument that it gives you more capacity to run a bigger business, they have more trucks there, they have more people there. There is another way to look at that in that it's a contracting and supply business which is operated to a large extent outside, which is causing a lot of the trouble for the surrounding neighborhood. And a building that brings some of that business inside could potentially be a, be less of an intensification. So, but that depends greatly on what we're using that building for. So you you said at the beginning here that this allowed you to bring some of the business inside. What what specifically has been brought inside?
Uh, some of the bigger equipment wouldn't fit in um any of the other garages that I have uh due to the existing door size, uh height, width, that sort of thing. So this is, this has a a larger door by two feet tall, two feet wide. So it'll allow me to get stuff um inside out of the weather. Um, some of the stuff we'd be working on outside cuz we we couldn't get it in, so this allows us to do that.
So it allows for the, so we're not processing any of the materials that we used to process outside inside?
No, and let me uh, let me just speak about that for a moment. Um, we, my processing operation is actually headquartered in Cohasset. The, as of um six months or so ago, I had rented out a small portion of my yard to the contractor that was doing the work at the lighthouse. Uh, and they had been doing some processing of that material on the site to bring in and bring out uh for that project. They have now ceased that operation as of, I'd say, a week and a half ago. They stopped processing the material and moved their plant off the site. Um, so the noise associated with that is is now gone. Um, they have now wrapped the project up for the most part. They're just doing the the final touch-ups around the lighthouse, being that it's Memorial Day weekend, I think that was their deadline. Um, so the majority of that processing is is done in Cohasset and and not on that site. So that this intense, the intense noise that probably brought this all to a head is now uh no longer.
Sure, but so the materials for the most part aren't being stored in this structure that's in question. It sounds like what you're saying is the overwhelming majority of the use of this structure is for the storage and maintenance of machinery and vehicles.
Correct.
All right. Um. With that, unless uh Bob, Neil, George or Ed, unless you have anything else to add or ask, I was gonna think about a quick reminder about public comment and then opening it up. Anything else?
I've got a picture of the building if uh you wanna show that on the screen, just for reference.
Uh, is it?
That's, that's the picture, yes, of course. So yeah, that's what we're talking about. It's not a small building.
It's not a small building, it's twenty-four hundred square feet. And it's very large for us. It is located in center of the site geometrically, more or less. Um, all right, doesn't sound like anyone has anything else at the moment, so.
Just to, just clarify, Anthony.
Please.
Um, the the structure was built a couple of years ago, is that the testimony of the applicant?
Yes.
And the first.
Eighteen.
So this, and the first discussion of this is coming forward, at least the applicant believes it may be contributed the, to the um, the construction of the lighthouse or the or the uh temporary seasonal intensification.
Correct.
But we haven't had any complaints about this structure um as an, as a intensification in and of itself, um since it was constructed um without a permit, but since it was constructed in two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
Um, Bob, is that, you haven't had any complaints about the structure itself or the use of the structure for the past couple of years?
No, I haven't had.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just add something? Maybe it came to me, but in a butter, it advised me of the situation. Uh, we stopped work uh since a cease and desist order um in, you know, directed Mr. Spass to come to the zoning board of appeals. Um, but this and other, you know, alleged intensifications have decided.
But Neil, that that would have been in early this year, correct?
March of twenty-one.
Yeah, cuz I know, you know, I I work a couple of days a week with Bob and um, you know, a lot of times something will come my way and I'll hit out and take a look at it myself and uh it 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 came through in a butter, that that's how we were advised of it.
Right, and so there there was a letter that was sent from the building department in January of twenty twenty-one from Bob uh with the cease and desist, um with the cease and desist, so that's when we would have, the town would have become aware of it.
That's right.
Well, in in March of twenty twenty-one, the the letter from the uh to the Z B A was dated February of twenty twenty-one.
Well, there's a, there's a letter from Bob to Stockbridge Properties dated January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Um. Okay, I haven't seen that, okay.
Cease and desist, yeah.
Yes.
Again, I'm just trying to get a timeline on on the structure. I mean, what we're talking about is, is this structure an intensification? Um, that would warrant, or or is it a as Anthony pointed out, it could be viewed as an intensification or as a uh diminishment of of the um, the the pre-existing non-conforming use in the sense that it it may um reduce the impact on the neighborhood by reducing noise, it'd be things becoming indoors rather than outdoors, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, there there's a difference between issues with the business, generally speaking, and issues with this particular building and its effect on the property and the neighborhood. Right, and that's what we're trying to to kind of tease apart here in this discussion.
And I think that is a good segue into some of the guidance I wanna give to the public comment. There is no scenario in which this board at this hearing tonight or really at any hearing stops this applicant from operating this business on this site. It is a pre-existing non-conforming use, it is allowed by law because of the history of this site. There are certain parameters on that use. I mentioned the seven AM start. Absolutely, that use has to be limited within their own property lines. That's just trespassing, which isn't necessarily the purview of this board, but other property owners have have a right to litigate and protect their own property lives. But I do need to keep the public comment this evening. We have a lot of folks who I feel wanna speak. We have a lot of additional applications to get to. We need to keep the public comment focused on whether or not this structure intensifies the pre-existing non-conforming use in a way that is significantly more detrimental to the neighborhood. Environmental issues, the seven AM, the the tenants and the nineteen ninety permit. I I don't want to cut off members of the public, members of the public right to speak at these hearings, it is very important. But I I can't allow everyone that's on this list to speak tonight to go on about those topics. They are not going to assist us in getting to a resolution of this application. My one last reminder is, we're going to ask folks to raise their hand on their video or on the Zoom. We'll unmute one at a time. We'll ask for your name and your address for the record, please. And then we will go from there. So with that, I would ask members of the public who wish to speak with questions or comments on this application to please raise their hands. I have an R Dylan on the Zoom name who I am going to unmute. And.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, Mr. Dylan. Just your name and your address for the record, please.
Yep, my name's Robert Dylan. I live at one thirty-four Stockbridge Road.
Go ahead, please, thank you.
Okay, I just wanna let, my name is Robert Dylan. I live at one thirty-four Stockbridge Road. I'd first like to thank the board, as well as many of my fellow community members for taking the time to attend today's meeting. I have lived in Situate for sixty-three years and I now work for the town of Situate as the assistant facilities director, working for the Situate Public Schools. I have lived on Stockbridge Road for more than thirty years. The last three of those years have been rendered by very difficult, inappropriate activities at the business located at one oh six, one oh eight Stockbridge Road, which abuts the rear of my property. As you are aware, we have filed a formal complaint due to the impacts, not just on my family, but on many people in the neighborhood. I'd like to make three specific points. There is currently and has been for several years activity on the property of one oh six, one oh eight Stockbridge Road that is in violation of the special permit granted to that business and likely in violation of local and state environmental regulations. The evidence of these violations is comprehensive and well-documented, is well-known to the town and thus must be acted upon to cause the cessation of these activities. This is a diverse and modest neighborhood, not one of the wealthiest neighborhoods in Situate. As such, it especially is important to the town to assure speedy resolution. Least there be the appearance of indifference towards such a diverse neighborhood. I'll be briefly elaborate on each point. Number one, we had submitted a complaint indicating that as long ago as two thousand eighteen, the operator of the business at one oh six, one oh eight was digging up waste previously buried illegally on the site with no mitigation of the impact of neighbors or on surface water. The impact included absolutely unbearable smells from waste, including clam waste impacting many households in the neighborhood. Both the town and eventually the state were notified. Unfortunately, the state investigators were not shown the offensive waste because as stated by the Board of Health, that it was on private property.
Probably out my car, so.
Um, unfortunately, the state environmental investigators were not shown this. This February, I submitted a letter detailing extensive current problems that include violations of the special permit for the site and environmental regulations. I will not detail that now. You have the letter in your possession. But it includes operating outside the permitted hours of operation, unpermitted hours, dumping in materials processing with extensive noise, dust, spillage of materials into surface water on adjoining property, spotlights directing onto abutting properties, and the construction of a non-conforming building, which was done so without any proper approvals. Lately, the hardship for the neighbors has become almost incessant. But keep in mind, this is not just a hardship for the immediate neighbors. For example, children walking to Jenkins School along Stockbridge Road are subjected to the dirt, the dust, the stirred up during the materials processing. Houses shake, the noise and smell are daunting. Dirt appears not only on cars, but people cannot hang out laundry, dry or leave windows open. Use the yards during some activities on the site. These concerns have been brought to the town through all the appropriate channels and are well-known to the town. Staff have been quite helpful and it appears there is a clear understanding that our complaint is valid. Therefore, it is now time for this board to act decisively, including revocation of this special permit. The imposition of meaningful fines and legal action if necessary. To be clear, no one in town has asserted that our complaint is without substance, such as the town is obligated to act. Finally, I must conclude by pointing out that this neighborhood is a more diverse and lower-income neighborhood than most in Situate. There is a growing concern that it appears that the people of Green Bush are treated differently than other places in Situate. I but fear that there is a growing apprehension, or at least the appearance that the town and or state takes such environmental violations less seriously in an area with greater minority and low-income representation. For example, the lack of sidewalks in Green Bush to the rail station and business district has been often mentioned as a sign of such indifference. This is no way an accusation, rather I am raising this concern because it has been mentioned by others. And I am certain that the town does not want even the mere appearance of such neglect. It is therefore critical to assure that all efforts are made to pollute such perception of the neglect or indifferency from actually becoming a reality. I have done my best to raise these concerns responsibly and follow proper channels throughout and with patience. I now believe it is time for the town to also behave responsibly and help residents of the Green Bush neighborhood. And as at the first paragraph of our zoning ordinance change, now quoting from the bylaw, protect the house, secure safety from fire, flood, panic and other dangers. Conserve natural resources, prevent blight and pollution of the environment and encourage the most appropriate elusive land. Thank you for your time and kind attention.
Thank you, Mr. Dylan. I wanna respond on a couple of points. First, I wanna thank you for summarizing your points the way you did and I'm not feeling the need to reiterate all all of them. I appreciate that. You made some very good points. I I do wanna respond on a couple of things. The first is your suggestion or request that we should revoke a special permit. The special permit that was granted in, there are two special permits that affect this property. The special permit that was granted in nineteen ninety was to allow uses beyond the contracting and supply business that has operated there for decades. That special permit doesn't need to be revoked because it, in a way, it was designed to revoke itself over time. And whether or not that happened, those uses that go beyond the contracting and supply use are no, are no longer there. So revoking that special permit would have no effect. It's it's no longer being utilized. In twenty sixteen, a special permit was granted to add a small office, four hundred and eighty square feet, to a building. And I was on the board at that time, I was not a voting member. But the reasoning behind that special permit was sort of that de-intensification that I mentioned before. We felt it would be in everyone's interest if there was some additional office space that would not create an issue for neighbors and allow for a business to be better run, hopefully for that business and for those neighbors. Revoking that special permit isn't going to do anyone good. I believe what your aim is, is for us to revoke or scale back the nature of the business that's occurring on that site. We don't have the power to do that because this site is is a pre-existing non-conforming use. There really isn't any question that this contracting and supply business has operated on this site since before the imposition of Situate zoning bylaw. Because of that, under state law, not just Situate zoning bylaw, we are unable to stop that use of this site currently. We are able to limit its modifications or advancement and intensifications, which is what we're considering here tonight. But the material storage and the trucks being on the site for non-residential purposes, that is not something we have the ability to stop. That really goes into, the next thing I wanted to mention was your your mention of treating the Green Bush District differently. This site's pre-existing non-conforming, it has nothing to do with where it was. It could be on Third Cliff. It could be next to the lighthouse or on Front Street. If it's pre-existing non-conforming, it's pre-existing non-conforming. Secondly, the Green Bush District is treated a little bit differently, but that's a factor of our town's planning. The Green Bush District is a district where certain development is allowed and even encouraged where it isn't in other aspects of town. Whether or not those decisions that were made via planning are smart, were smart when they were made, are Whether or not those decisions that were made via planning are smart, were smart when they were made, are smart in hindsight, is a conversation for another day and honestly, not the purview of this board. We are tasked with enforcing many of those regulations, not with putting them in place in the first place. That is other boards in the town, primarily the planning board and other departments. That's really where I wanted to respond on those two points. If, unless anyone else has anything to add, we certainly have some more hands.
I've never been shy.
I'd like to comment.
What's that? Yes, Ed.
Ed Tippett, I would like to comment.
Please.
I appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Dylan's concerns and I appreciate his comments. However, I, I find fault with the suggestion that the diversity of a neighborhood or the lack of diversity of a neighborhood should influence this board in any way, shape, or form. It never has. We are a board that abides by the law. We have dealt with forty Bs throughout the town. The Stockbridge Road project that's under construction is a forty B, which we worked very hard to mitigate impacts on the neighborhood. We have dealt with the railroad station. In the time I've been on the board, Green Bush has been often at the center of our attention. And it's unfortunate that the, that this is an area of town where there are pre-existing non-conforming uses, which continue. It's my neighborhood. I'm a half mile from this project and from this property. We have the, the former Paul Young property, the, which, which was a legally registered and licensed scrapyard. I can't remember the category, but either Class A or Class One or whatever, the highest category scrapyard possible. It has, we have successfully worked with the owner of the property over the many years and changes of ownership to reduce the non-conformity on that property, but it's still non-conforming, but much less so than it was licensed and legally allowed to be. And much the same as this property on Stockbridge Road. We are, it is going to exist. It does exist as a non-conforming, pre-existing use. And what we're here today to talk about is whether this structure, albeit constructed without permits, is an intensification or not. And I would hope that the applicants and the, or the commenters from the community can focus on that. I want to hear about this structure and how it has intensified or made life intolerable in the neighborhood, not whether or not the existence of this prop, of this use is intolerable.
Well, the Quonset hut is now the view off my back deck.
And many people have. Many people have views they don't like. Views are not subject to property rights. So I'm sorry about that, but that's, that's, that may not be the issue. And again, when did this complaint come forward? Was it, was it when the structure was built? If it was in time when the structure was built, I'd be more curious as to, I wish we had known the structure was being built and we could have, maybe the building commissioner could have stopped it at that time. But at this point in time, we're looking back retroactively a number of years.
Well, at that time, I wasn't sure how to approach and file a complaint. I just learned that from my son-in-law when we were going through the issues when they were dumping from the storage projects from down the dump. I think you can see the pictures and I obviously have plenty of films of things that were in there. And as far as treating Green Bush different, I filed that complaint February twenty-eighth, and it took nine and a half weeks for people to get down and take a look. Can you explain that to me, please?
I think that's pretty, pretty rapid. In the age of COVID and everything else, I'm a, I'm a middle school teacher and it's taken me over nine months to get to see my students' faces at lunch break.
I think that's a little different, Mr. Tippett. Thank you.
I don't, I think, I think your, I think your suggestion that you're being treated differently is reprehensible. And I'm, I'm sorry, but I, that I do not agree with you on that in any way, shape, or form.
And you have that right. Thank you.
Could I add something from the building department?
Please, Neil.
So as this process evolved, I think in the pandemic, absolutely played a part here. We weren't going to sites. Town Hall was closed. There was one person a day in there. There's no question, people were staying away from people, weren't even doing inspections of houses, let alone, you know, this type of complaint, as valid as it is, that was, you know, as soon as things started to ease up, we, we have been aggressively pursuing this. So as this thing unfolded, I think what we found is that the main complaint up there is, was the processing. And I think, to me, it's very important through this whole kind of negotiation process in the building, to me. And I, I understand what you're saying, Ed, but I think the building, it's, if, if you look at case law, a pre-existing non-conforming using, a, a building is, in fact, a, an intensification. I mean, there's no question about it. Whether or not that bothers somebody, doesn't bother, is an intensification. It, it could amount to a change of use, which would require a variance. So I, I think to the extent that we can apply some mitigation here, we can solve several problems. And so the biggest problem, I think, is the processing. And Mr. Spath has basically advised, you know, Bob and I, that this, the processing primarily takes place in Cohasset. And, you know, I think our goal is to, you know, yet we want Mr. Spath to be successful, but perhaps in a way that doesn't hurt his business, but also, you know, works for the neighbors and everybody gets along to the extent possible. Okay?
Thank you, Neil.
I concur, Neil.
I'm going to move on to, we have a phone number with a hand raise, the phone number's ending six oh eight oh. I am going to unmute that person. Brianna, they're not coming unmuted. Is there something else we need to do to unmute a phone call?
No, the only thing you can do is ask them to unmute. Press it a couple times, maybe. Oh, there, there we go. I think they're unmuted.
Fantastic.
Hi, my name is Chris Karshia. I live at 119 Stockbridge Road. Can you hear me?
Thank you.
Um, so I originally came on to complain about how much I want to shut him down. And I think I'm going to speak more in his defense. I've been here, I've been in this, my family's been in this house since nineteen fifty, from Wheeler on up through. Mr. Spath's operation, well, way more intense than Wheeler ever was. Isn't incredibly bad. I think a lot of it has to do with the construction next door at Stockbridge Landing, which has made the truck traffic ten times worse than it's been, you know, since Spath has moved in. As far as the building goes, I can say that I did speak to Bob about it back in 2019 or so. I was told to write a written complaint about it. I just asked if there had been a permit pulled on it. I never submitted a written complaint, so it probably ended right there. I would just like to know that the building conforms with all current zoning bylaws, that it conforms with all building, building codes, and, you know, is allowed to be there by law and not just because he's asking for forgiveness after he's already built it. I think that's pretty much all I have to say.
All right. So, so to that point, the non-conforming nature of this building is centered around its use, which wouldn't be allowed but for the fact that the use has existed for so long that it is allowed. Grandfather, pre-existing non-conforming, where we are. The building did not violate the site's setbacks. As to whether or not it is up to code, I would ask Bob to speak to that. But my understanding is this is the first step in that process. An electrical inspection isn't going to be worth much if we were going to make them tear the building down. So I, I'm not sure that those inspections have been conducted yet. Bob, can you fill me in on that?
No, we haven't done any inspections because we can't, or don't do inspections without a permit application. So the next step, after having been, you know, given a special permit or finding by the board, would be to file a building permit. And of course, by the nature of, of the situation, this is all being done retroactively. And I do understand that that's not a good thing, but here we are. And we'll do the best we can to rectify the situation and, you know, achieve a proper closure.
If I could add, there's a cease and desist on the use of the building. That was in the letter. For that reason, we don't want a building.
Until it's properly permitted.
Properly permitted.
Right.
So I think that answers.
But with respect, with respect to those issues that are generally before this board, the building as constructed does meet its setbacks and all other aspects that I'm familiar with. Its construction, whether it was properly constructed, whether it has proper electrical service, plumbing service if necessary, et cetera, that would be a building department question. But to the member of the community's, Mr. Karshia's comment, the building is, is, would be constructed according to zoning if it was allowed in zoning. But the use of the, of the structure is what we have the concern of. Does it intensify this pre-existing non-conforming use?
I, I completely understand. I appreciate all of your efforts and your comments. Thank you. Mr. Bukary, I would like to follow up with you further about joining the zoning board.
Oh, fantastic. We can, or we'll, please reach out. We are, we are running at a bit of a deficit here, especially with Ed leaving us.
I'll make an opening. You can have more.
I, I will be in touch.
People who properly pronounce my last name. There's not that many of us left.
I will be in touch. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. I would ask anyone else that wishes to speak to raise their hand. We have a lot of people listening. We have, I'm guessing it's Mr. Papadonis. I'm going to. You are muted. I have asked to unmute you. I think you might have to click something. There you go.
Okay, that's my wife's name you're seeing up there in the mirror. Yes.
Fantastic.
Paul Papadonis, 197 Hadley Road. So the, I, I have a question. Question is, maybe I didn't hear it out, everything that was presented, but the, the new building that's been constructed, is, is that much bigger than the building that existed there before? How much bigger by square footage?
Sure. So to be clear, it didn't replace the other two buildings that were on the site. There is a, there's a large, about eleven thousand square foot garage and building running up the right-hand side as you enter the property. And then there was a smaller, just under, just under two thousand square foot garage on the left side as you enter the property, which in 2016 expanded by just under five hundred square feet. So that making that about a twenty-five hundred square foot garage building. This is.
What's there now?
What, those were the two buildings that have been there for quite some time.
Okay.
New building in question is a twenty-four hundred square foot storage building.
Okay. I guess the reason that I ask that is that, you know, it's the question of intensification, I think, is the verbiage that you used. And, you know, seeing, seeing that and being close to that and seeing that, that to me, that could be an intensification. That, I mean, I, I don't live on Mr. Dylan's property, but, you know, I, I've experienced in other, living in other towns in central Mass, a very, very similar situation where they took a car dealership and they expanded the parking lot and expanded the, you know, the dealer, the dealership building as well, without any, you know, trees or fences or buffers or, and it really was an eyesore. It really, you know, and, and the sound that comes out from, you know, from trucks and heavy equipment, you know, all day in, day out, can be very wearing on, on the neighborhood, you know. So anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. And it's a, it's a point that deserves a good deal of consideration. There was approximately twelve thousand three hundred square feet of buildings on this site previously. We are adding twenty-four hundred square feet. That's, that's almost a twenty percent increase in the interior space on this property that can be used for this non-conforming use. That is absolutely a significant increase. Now, what that increase is used for can go to, I feel, what goes directly to whether or not that intensification is more or less detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about a visual intensification.
There, I understand that point. I think Ed made before, visual gets a little complicated. There's a lot of law on view and what one person thinks they should and shouldn't have to look at out a window. That gets a little more nuanced and complicated. We, I, I'm not saying that is not part of our consideration, but it is just one part of our consideration. We, we do need to look at that and as it goes to the other practical implications of the use.
So going back to, and my, my history is way back, this was Milford, Massachusetts. The car dealership put up, you know, abreviated trees, one after another, as a, as a visual buffer. And then eventually they put up a large fence behind that as well, so.
So and to that end, so and you live on that side of the property where the, where the, this building is in view?
I, I, I lived, yes. I had a clear view of it, particularly in the.
Sorry, I'm off. Now, now I'm talking about the, the Quonset hut.
All that. No, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't live there now, so I can't, I can't speak to that. Mr. Dylan can, I cannot.
Right. So we'll get, we will certainly touch back upon the shading. I want, I want to hear from a couple more folks. Unless you have somebody else to add, Mr. Paul Donas. Think you might have frozen. All right. We are going to hear from, I have a Richard Mark Fenton. Going to ask to unmute, see if we can get you ready to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Fenton, 25 Cressidav. You're hearing me?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to make three quick points. It strikes me, the testimony we're hearing is suggesting there is definitely an intensification of use and that it is entirely likely that that building was facilitated of that. And further, the, the time delay between the construction of the building and hearing the complaints from the neighbors about that intensification does not necessarily preclude the building from having been facilitative of the intensification. I'd go a step further to say that it may well be your only hearing from the neighbors now because this has been their first formal opportunity. Because the gentleman built the building without a proper permit, there was no hearing, no opportunity to be. Because the gentleman built the building without a proper permit, there was no hearing, no opportunity to be concerned about it or offer concern. Right? This is the first legal opportunity can neighbors have, other than if they had initiated them a pro- process themselves. So neighbors are now responding and saying, yes, there is an intensification. It's happened at least coincidentally and they are asserting in no part facilitate, in, in some part facilitated by. The increase in the size of the building. I think it is well within your purview to therefore address that directly. And I think Mr. Duggan has offered a path other than suggesting. We're not going to grant the permit. You have to take the building down. That's a legal, a, a legal tool that is available to the board. And right? You can say, we're not granting the permit retroactively, take the building down. Another would be, uh, if I'm not, if I understand correctly, and I defer to you, I'm offering that. The, the other would be to pursue some of the remedies that, that Mr. Duggan has alluded to. And I'd suggest that that is, is an alternative path that might work best for everybody. But I don't think, I just want to restate this. I don't think there's any reason that we can assume. The time delay between the construction and this board hearing about it suggests that the building therefore was not a problem. Or not facilitative of the intensification. That time delay could well be reflective of the fact that. A bunch of citizens who don't have knowledge and skills in this area simply didn't know what, what path to take. I, I, I hope that's a reasonable, uh, sort of frame and, and, and I thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Absolutely. Thank you. We have, um, Jack McInnis.
Yes, I'm here.
Hi there.
How you doing? From, uh, Jack McGinnis, 93 Stockbridge Road. I live across the street down a little bit. Um, I guess my question, I'm not the brightest guy in this, in the room, but. They built the building without a permit. What am I missing? Well, how, how is the building still there? They built it without a permit and two, two, three years later, you're going to give them a permit? So I can just go onto my property and do whatever I want and hope for the best? That's, I mean, uh, it, it doesn't make any sense to me. I'm not a, I'm not the brightest guy, but this just doesn't make sense.
Well, it, it's a, it's a valid question. The. The penalty for building a building without a permit isn't absolute that the building needs to be torn down. The, the way the law looks at it, the way historical practice has gone and Neil and Bob, please jump in, uh, if, if you'd like. Is that. There's a cease and desist order that goes out. And the process is required to be done. If the process isn't completed. Once that order goes out, or if during the process, it is determined that the building wouldn't have been allowed in the initial process. Then the building absolutely is more often than not probably torn down. But the penalty for building a building that would have been allowed without a permit. Is typically a fine and some delays and having to go through these processes.
Yeah. Hi, Jack.
Hi Neil, how you doing?
So basically if somebody works, does something without a permit, we do what we did when we found out, we. Uh, we film the cease and desist. Um. You know, typically we'd say, you know, you come and get your building permit and the, um, our fee structure allows us to double the fee for building without a permit. Uh, in this case here, the only way that building is going to be allowed is if the zoning board of appeals allows it. So, you know, we have to give people their due process and, uh, this is what we're doing right now and, uh. It, it's not automatic. You do something without a permit, you tear it down, but you know, you, you do run the risk of. You know, getting yourself in front of boards, of being fined heavily, of having fees doubled and, you know, maybe if it, if it. Were not placed properly in the lot line, you'd have to move it. So. Uh, and then, you know, this is always a concern is the building safe? You allowed to be occupied? Something happens, you're liable. So. A lot of good reasons for getting a permit. All right.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, I'm. I just look and say, I, I, you, you just go and do something without having a permit. Doesn't sit right with me.
Yeah, if we find out, i- i- it's not going to be very comfortable, you know, for those folks who do that, so.
And, and to be clear, the building's currently under a cease and desist order. The building. Should not have been being used from the time of the order. Until the building permit process is completed.
But it, it sounds like it is being used, no?
Oh, I can't speak to that. I imagine it is being used. What is allowed and what is prohibited and what actually happens. Is, uh, is often very different, as I'm sure you can imagine.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, all.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised. Give everyone a minute. Again, if you raise your, we do have a hand, a, a Jay Mullen. Yes, I see you. We have asked to unmute. There you are. Please go ahead.
Okay. I didn't intend to. Have the comments that I initially wanted to make because. I have great concern over what I've heard here tonight. I. I think a lot of things have been. Made as assumptions that are not true. First of all, I happen to know for a fact that the reason this building even came into the purview. Of the zoning board and the people here tonight was because I had drone footage done of my property back in December. And suddenly, finally, people were paying attention. I am beyond upset. I am the direct abutter. To the commercial property. I have been sending letters and trying to get this. Property addressed since 2018 and earlier. And heard nothing, nothing from any of the departments in this town up to and including. The town administrator. So. That aside, and I can, I can give you every piece of documentation involved. I am more than upset by this and I do not. Appreciate. As someone who knows about open meeting law, the people are not allowed to make a comment without you coming back with immediate. Responses without checking. The laws involved, but I do have a statement that is a little bit off the cuff of some of this. I have several complaints and concerns as a direct abutter to the commercial property being addressed here tonight. I want to bring to attention. Your attention to section 440.1 of the zoning bylaws screening of commercial uses. Which states. Any business of commercial use conducted outside a completely enclosed building, including storage, accessory parking with commercial vehicles. In service of manufacturing materials. Shall, if visible at normal eye level from any point within the R1, R2, or R3 districts. And less than 150 feet distance shall be completely screened. From such view, except we're separate, separated from said districts by a railroad. Or, or by a public or private way, having a width of 40 feet or more. Screening required under this paragraph shall be an evergreen planting fence or suitable visual barrier. I was verbally, and I stress verbally, informed. This is not applied to a grandfathered property. Where is that written? This is unacceptable. The term grandfathers. Is undocumented within this bylaw. Therefore, the bylaw should be required and adhered to as written. Additionally, again, your bylaws state. Effort to protect the land and townspeople from any activities that would jeopardize public health. Enjoyment of residence and/or the continued effort to make Situate a community of which we can all be proud. It is dishonorable that the town does not enforce its own bylaws intended to protect our residential neighborhoods. I would strongly encourage the screening be executed promptly. Finally, I want to know that the letter, I want it known that the letter sent to me in answer to my formal letter of complaint to zoning. Asking to address the unethical encroachment and dumping into my backyard by Andrew Spath's company. Made a determination with unsubstantiated information and did not authenticate. The boundaries which would have clearly refuted their erroneous findings. I expect there will be immediate effort to rectify this situation. And in continuation of this meeting tonight, which I find an abomination. That Mr. Spath mentions me by name, but has never spoken to me. Since buying the property immediately adjacent to me, the unit next door. And I am not going to sit back and watch. What has been dumped in my backyard previous to him living, buying this property. And he does not live on the property. He just bought it and has in now, is now a landlord and I have stakes. Just put in two days ago to prove how much. My corner stake is in his parking lot and shame, shame on the town of Situate. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a bad.
Can I add something to that? Um, I, I just wanted to let the board know that. I own the adjacent property with her. She is not the sole owner. We own that together. So she's, she's speaking.
Right, ma'am. You're, you're muted. We'll, we'll certainly let you respond.
I, I just wanted to make, I, I don't really wanted to get into a long argument over the history of. That property and the use of it and all that, but. I do own, it is a duplex. Property. And I own half of it.
Find out to locate this property as a question.
Um, I don't know. I had dropped some documents off, um, to the, to your secretary the other day with some aerial photos to. Kind of denote the, uh, property lines. I don't know if, if they made it to you or not. Oh yeah. So if we go to the plan, there we go.
On your side, Glenn, I, I got 106 and 116. Are we talking about either of those?
Uh, we are looking at map 54 block two. Uh, dash, uh, lot 23 and 23D. It's the, the larger lot, uh, to the left. Of the, uh, of my garages.
Yeah.
Uh, so we own that together. Uh, and.
When you own that together, you mean you're just, you're, you're joint tenants?
Complex.
It's a, it's a duplex. I don't have.
Spoken to me, he does obviously not understand what the property and the, the master deed indicates. As to how this is owned.
Sure. So.
Mr. Chairman, I, I could clarify that, that this duplex is a condominium.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, Ms. Mullen. We're going to let other people speak. I, I muted you. I apologize. We're, we're going to let the applicant council speak, please.
This, um. Uh, duplex was, was, uh, converted into a condominium. That has two, uh, units. Uh, one Ms. Mullen lives in and the other one is owned by Stockbridge Properties.
I, I, I understand. Thank you. That is, I. To be honest, a- any dispute over the ownership or nature of the ownership of that property.
I would like to know his name.
Just, just a moment, please, Ms. Mullen.
I want to know his name. It's a simple request. What is his name?
Ms. Mullen. I really don't want to remove you from the meeting. In between accusing us of dishonor and violation of certain laws, you made some valid points that I want to make sure we consider. What I was saying. Is any disputes over the nature of the ownership of the abutting property are not what is before us tonight. Your points about screening are well taken. And I feel will be the bulk of the remainder of the board's discussion tonight. So, thank you for that.
I don't think it's unreasonable to ask this man's name.
I, you're asking the name of the applicant's counsel?
Yes.
I, I'm sorry, sir. What, what is, what is your last name? I don't have it.
I'm sorry. I didn't realize that was she was asking. I'm Stephen Ryder, R I D E R, and I'm a, an attorney in Hingham.
Thank you. That was simple.
Thank, thank you. I would like to ask if anyone else would like to raise their hand and ask any questions or make any comments. We have one more. I have a, a David Sturgeon.
Yeah, I guess I have a question. Um, I'm not a resident of Situate, but I frequent, um, Mr. Dylan's home and I was wondering if I could. Give, uh, my opinion, I guess. Is that acceptable as a?
That is, that is acceptable. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So I've, um, so I'm married to, um, Bob's daughter and so I've been going to Bob's house since about 2009. And I guess to a point of the, uh, discussion today and whether the. Uh, this set structure has increased the intensification. Um. I guess my point of it would be that I have personally seen it increase the intensification. I say this from a, a number of points. Um. Many times we've held, uh, barbecues or even recently weddings in the backyard. Um, and since, uh, 2018, I've consistently heard from my mother and father-in-law, which is of recent time. Why I talked about making a formal complaint and in this time, um, due to the intensification, they frequently have to. For example, have significant amounts of dust and debris then come on to their deck, which is. Uh, in close proximity, um, as well as. Significantly more shaking of their house and land into the point of, I know we talked about times of operation. Um, but that intensification is clear by someone that did. Frequently the property well before the structure was built and has since seen, um, an intensification of. Uh, activity as well as, um, just, uh, disruption, you could say from it. And to that point of, uh, I know. It's not necessarily a consideration today, but there is. Um. A, a requirement or an obligation to understand that. This disruption also has caused, call it a public health situation of that debris and light that. Everybody wants to consider, I, consider, and although they are grandfathered at the use. Um, that intensification is not like, it can't just continue as, as they say fit, which to me, at least what I've seen. The, um, structure being constructed, it has directly resulted in that intensification. Um, there's no doubt that of recent. Sorry, please.
Could, could you elaborate on, on that last part? Cause I, I mean, that's a, that is a very important part. Point to our analysis. Excuse me. You, you said there that, that you feel that the construction of that building has somehow coincided. Or directly contributed to that increase in dust vibration, general disruption. But I, 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 you may not be able to do this and I understand, but if you can help connect those two dots for us, that would be extremely helpful.
Yep. And so I can only tell you from, I guess, my own personal experience, which is we frequently hang out on the deck. And we used to commonly have, um, barbecues and whatnot outdoor and. I would say frequently as, I'd say it's early 2019 because obviously the construction of the building is not immediate and for that matter, the. Disruption doesn't always take place immediately. Um. We don't even hang out on the deck very often. Outside of smoking a cigarette, it's like we goes directly back inside because. It, it's just covered with dust. Uh, so they hang clothes outside. You can't even hang outside anymore without it being covered in dust because of this intensification that's happening. Um, and there's no doubt it's continued and become even more frequent of recent times, which I think Mr. Spath mentioned is because of a project happening. And I guess my personal fear of this situation is although the board may consider it to be. That a slip on the radar or that he then, uh, uses a different property as the main processing facility. Nothing is going to stop him from intensifying in this building, then allowing him to store more equipment. Um, further allows that specification to happen unchecked. And I guess that's my personal fear, knowing. Those discussions that's happened and seen, uh, physical remnants of consistently have to do clean the deck and unwillingness to even hang out at times in the backyard because of that. Less than disruption.
So I, uh. Valid point, very well put. I, I appreciate it. What do you say? And I apologize to put this question on you, buddy. It's part of. It's part of our analysis and we like to hear from someone that has specific understanding of property. What would you say to the question that, well, if, if the property's gonna continue as this business? And this structure allows them to store heavy machinery indoors and work on the maintenance of heavy machinery indoors as opposed to outdoors? And the contention that I think is what they're making, that this lessens the issues that you're referring to?
I guess I would respond with the question of if someone is repairing equipment that may otherwise not be operational at time or not be able to be frequently used inside a facility that then is now easily operated consistently on and for that matter allowed to be stored, additional vehicles and trucks that may not even be counted as part of the discussion. I know we talked about thirty plus earlier today. I don't understand how that wouldn't result in an intensification of the use and, and just allows a facility to almost be brought here because he's going to naturally be going to repairing and bringing equipment that allows that facilitation.
Thank you.
I, I, you know, mentally, I don't know how that is disconnected to.
No, I, I do, I do understand what you're saying. No, thank you.
I, I, I think what Mr. Sturgeon is saying is that it's an enabling activity, right? It is not necessarily directly related, but it will allow for more vehicles to exist on the property and function and function as part of his business, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Yeah, essentially.
And Mr. Mr. Sturgeon, I think, and what we heard from Mr. Dylan earlier is, and it seems like your property is, is one of the, the most impacted by having this Quonset hut right there through the backyard and whatnot. In terms of screening, you know, I'm, I'm not as familiar with your property line. I'm familiar with the layout of this property and the size of this building. Is there screening that could make a difference here? Is there, you know, when I think of a fence, even a, even a larger than normal fence, it seems like it would come up a bit short. Arboretis, things like that, what, what sort of was that?
I think it would help. I mean, there's no doubt that any screening that would assist in, I guess, the air pollution, I'll call it. I don't know of anything as far as a mitigation tool that's going to stop, for example, the increased vibration from the activity of large trucks or triaxle trucks where, for example, I was driving yesterday from his house to Maria's to grab trucks and then the truck was halfway across the line coming through the property. And so the, just the increased activity of those trucks and the size of those trucks, I don't understand how any mitigation would resolve that. And I know that the discussion today is not a change of use and it shouldn't be to your point, but I think that increased activity, although may help with the dust pollution, I'm not sure how it actually helps with the other underlying issues that come from, you know, these trucks and these equipment being on site. And that could be like, it's not going to change noise. You might change the dust and be welcomed. It might allow people with loud music to enjoy the outside more versus not breathing in dust that my kids would breathe in, but I'm not gonna, you know, I mean, you've got, you've got nothing.
No, I, I understand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ask anyone else that wishes to speak or comment or questions on the application? To please raise their hand. Don't believe we have anyone else. There we go. Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, just a question. Were you to?
Just your name and address.
Yes, yes, sorry. Mark Fenton, twenty-five Crescent Ave. Just as clarif- clarification, were you to, were the board to consider granting the building permit? What level of, I, I served on the planning board, so I'm not as familiar with what kinds of conditions you can put on a, on a permit like this. Can you, could formal can, uh, conditions include things like screening and so on associated with the structure? Or can it only be applied to the physical structure itself in, in a case like this? Could, could you clarify that for, for my stuff?
Certainly. In, in my opinion, there are, we could absolutely put very specific conditions on the grant to give a special permit. The, the nature of our review is whether or not this intensification, and I, I do believe it is an intensification. It's a lot of square footage we're adding. Whether or not it's substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood, we could certainly say we feel it wouldn't be substantially more detrimental if.
Understood. Okay. I just thank you. I wanted clarification on that so that if you move in that direction, because I think the testimony has been compelling regarding the intensification. I think that part, and, and I think there's growing evidence from the conversation that they can be connected in time to the structure. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a couple more hands? I have Mike.
Can we? Hi, yeah, Mike Adams, one oh eight Andrew Foster Road, Situate. Just a couple of observations. We, we've visited the site on several occasions over the last few years, visiting Jeannie at her home. And just a couple of observations is that the intensification of the use of the site does seem to be evident in the activity that I've observed over the last handful of years in that the level of site deposits, filling of what appears to be a wetland area has intensified over the last couple of years. And Jeannie said correct in her comments earlier that appears as though the site has expanded into the property commonly owned to condominiums where she lives. And Andrew lives or owns at least. I've observed it and it's been surveyed and documented. So it seems as though the existence of the building certainly has pressured the amount of available space for the other activities of dumping, and which has resulted in additional filling and it's spreading out of the site. And in what appears to be an additional kind of encroachment on the wetlands, which, you know, I, I doubt that the conservation commission has looked at with any legitimate process to date. But I assume that, you know, if, you know, this, this board approves the use of the site, that it would go through a permit process and conservation would then look at it appropriately to consider what was done in to facilitate the construction of the site, the building that we're talking at, as well as additional activity beyond that's happened more recently that I personally evidenced.
I actually don't, I don't know the answer to that question. Bob or Neil, any comment on whether or not CONCON will be involved subsequent to our granting permit if we did? Bob, I think you're still muted.
Okay. So for every permit that involves proximity to wetlands, we need to get conservation's sign off before we can issue the permit. My evidence or the interaction I've had with our conservation agent, Amy Walkie, doesn't indicate that she feels there's a problem in that area, but I would certainly re-ask that, that question specifically on the occasion of reviewing the permit application.
Well, I, I would, I would fully expect that as normal permitting process, that conservation would be consulted and they would be introduced into this and evidence would be provided in a, in an orally appropriate fashion. I don't know that details have been shared with Amy that would, that would help her to conclude that there was or was not inappropriate activities, you know, in the construction of the site. I don't know how she would have that ability to make that determination based on the process that has been concluded to date.
Well, I'm certainly not able to speak for Amy, but she has been present on the site on several occasions. I know that. And on at least two occasions accompanied by representatives from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay. And were they showing evidence of the site conditions prior to the construction of the building?
I don't, I can't speak to that.
I doubt that, right? So I, I think there needs to be appropriate process i- i- in all aspects of this consideration, right?
Mike, do you have some evidence that that means within a hundred feet of wellens?
I, the, the, the site, the, I'm talking about the activities on the site generally, Neil, but the, the building itself, I'm saying is after the existence of the building, there seemed to have been an intensification of the activities on the site, which resulted in further filling of the site, including parts of Jeannie's property.
Okay.
As well as wetlands. I'm not saying the site itself necessarily, but it's created an issue where the building exists and now they're seeking further area to, to hold their operations for, for dumping. Right? And so that's what I'm saying. It's pushed, it's pushed the envelope of the use of the site.
Yeah, she has been on the site several times and, and recently with DEP. So she is on top of it and she'll, you know, any, any sort of response complaints as we all do.
Well, I don't, I don't know that there's been a proper hearing, you know, on the matter.
I guess she'll have to take that up with conservation, maybe?
Well, I, it was partly, Neil, a question of it. I would assume the conservation, the process of getting conservation approval would be part of a permit process in this case as well, even though it's been built without.
Well, it, it, it will be that, that won't, they don't get to circumvent that. It's just not a process that's happened yet.
Right. I just, I just didn't, I, I just didn't want the meeting to close with the impression that there were no environmental issues here to consider. Right? And I think the extent of the building has aggravated that.
And it's, and that's primarily because we are not the governing body for those environmental.
My, my, my point, I'm sorry, Anthony, is that what I was trying to say is that the existence of the building has intensified the use of the site, which has created additional issues as well. And in the facilitating, facilitation of the building, there may have been other violations that relate to conservation that then you may not be aware of, because it didn't go through proper process.
I, I follow you and, and my understanding, and I think as Bob just explained, is if a special permit was granted, then the building department goes through their process for granting a building permit, part of that process is a review by CONCON.
I would expect that. Thank you.
Of course.
If I could, moment. Tibbetts?
Ed, please.
Um, I think it's also important though to note, the, the statement was just made that the construction of the building has intensified the conservation issues on the property. And that's not evident before us either. This, this construction of the building is not within the hundred foot buffer zone of the, in the area. It is constructed alongside a pre-existing retaining wall, which I'm, I'm looking on Google Maps and pre-existed before this construction of either the building or the office space, which was permitted and, and permitted a couple of years ago. So we're, there's a lot of speculation about things that are being made, stated. In the last two years, concurrent with the construction of this building, we have a major construction project going on next door to this property, which I have to suggest may have contributed to the quote unquote air pollution that was commented about dust and et cetera, et cetera, in the area. There's been a lot of, uh, truck traffic associated with the construction of that project, which is a forty B. I just, I think it's, it's challenging for us whenever we have to go back and look at a structure that was built without a permit. And I don't like it, but at the same time, as Anthony pointed out, the remedy is not always to just take the building down. The law prevents that. I was on the board at one time when we did find that a building needed to be relocated on the lot because of its proximity to lot lines. And they went to court and then we were told we had to reconsider it. You know, we are constrained in many respects. In this case, we need, I, I'd like the board to be looking at this. I think we have to look at it in a retrospective way that if the applicant came before us with a request to build this building and identify whether it was an intensification. And I, I would argue that they are moving repair of heavy equipment indoors, reducing sound in the neighborhood. There are other, I could make some other cases that I'd like the applicant to be making, not me, that the construction of this building is consistent with the pre-existing non-conforming use and actually reduces the impact on the neighborhood. And in addition, I'd like the, if this were before us and the building were not yet built, I know the board would be asking the applicant what else the applicant can do to help to, uh, uh, mediate, mitigate the issues associated with this non-conforming use in a residential neighborhood, screening, et cetera. Although the, um, the member of the public who mentioned screening and the screening bylaw, that, that bylaw has to do with when something is being built, not something that preexists. So in the, in the nature of building this structure, we could certainly look at the pre-existing use and inquire whether we could, we could require as a condition of the permit, screening. I'd like the applicant to be, to bring forward a proposal that mitigates the, um, some of those issues that have been presented and, and supports the idea that this building is not an intensification, rather than have all the speculation that's coming out from the public.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
Can I respond to that?
Yes, please.
Um, I have in the past and will continue to offer to put a large berm up, separating our properties from Mr. Dylan's and my adjacent property at one thirty Stockbridge. I've offered that previously. I'll continue to offer that. Uh, two thousand eighteen, when, when I was for the board for my office, I, I had actually met with the neighbors, I'm not, I'm sorry, two thousand sixteen. Two thousand eighteen, I had, they called conservation and we, we had done this previously with the DEP and all that and the same, with the same result, no, no violations were found. However, at the time I had offered to put some screening up, to clean, to, to do what I could. I, I didn't get any, they had no interest. They went, Ms. Mullen went so far as to call the police on me one day because she thought I was on her property. So I, I, I haven't done anything. However, I would be happy to put a large berm up to block the view.
Hello? The offer was Jersey barriers.
Um, no, ma'am.
Backyard?
Ma'am, I, I had offered to build.
That was your offer.
Okay, we're, we're not gonna go back and forth.
That's fine. So as you can see, it was a bit of a strained conversation. However, I will continue to offer to put a, a large earth and berm up to block that view.
Then why is the corner stake in the middle of your parking lot? Are you, are you thinking that it doesn't matter?
Um, well, let me point out a few facts, Ms. Mullen. The first would be that for as far back as I can find on Google Earth photos, that part, that piece of land has been used as part of this yard. The second, now more important fact would be that I am also the owner of that parcel as well.
You can't make it a different use than residential property.
Well, man, I, I think we'll just have to work that out later, however.
Baiting into what is a private boundary line dispute.
Okay, Anthony, then who in the town makes sure that a residential property is not used as, for use other than a residential property? Because that's the question here.
Ms. Mullen, you are referring to trespass, which is a civil action between two property owners?
Excuse me, did, is the town not responsible, as in the bylaws, to, to protect residential property? I've been told otherwise. residential property? I've been told otherwise.
That you're you're confusing two points. The town regulates use via its bylaw, yes, but you're referring to trespass, which is the onus is on the property owner to enforce their own property rights. We would prefer it be peaceably and through cooperation and, if necessary, litigation. But I honestly, I I hope you all work that out, but we are going to move on from the property line dispute for the purposes of this here.
Same on you.
Of the screening, we are, you've offered a berm, and I imagine you might be open to some screening on top of the berm if there was a berm and some greenery or something like that. I think to some other people's point, it's not gonna change the fact that there's a construction and material storage yard on the other side of it, but it's certainly not gonna make things worse.
Correct. I'd be, I would be open to that.
I um you know, I think, looking at this, I think this is absolutely an intensification. I think we go back and forth for a while as to whether or not it's more detrimental, it's less detrimental. You're, in my view, we already have a limitation on the number of employees that could be at the site and the number of construction vehicles or heavy vehicles that can be at the site. In my view, that isn't changing. And if we have a building that I I understand the point of building facilitates more space and intensification, but in light of the fact that we can't have more people and we can't have more vehicles, getting those, that number of people and that number of vehicles inside, I feel there is an argument to be made that that's that that is a mitigator of the activity that is going on. I think that screening is is a real point. It it's it doesn't fix what's next door to this residential neighborhood. I think it may very well be the best that we can do. I'm not sure we're at a point tonight where we can just talk about a berm and some shrubbery on top of it without some sort of plan, but I'd be interested to hear what my fellow board members think on that front. Um.
Yeah, Anthony, I was, that's where I was coming out on this, which is, um, I think without uh, I think if there is some kind of mitigation, um, that makes a much more compelling case for approval. I think without a plan for mitigation and a mere sort of promise, I I I mean, that's not sufficient, right? We would, we would want to see um, a a real plan uh about that, right? And considering that no mitigation has been done from a screening standpoint, um, since Matt has owned the property, um, you know, it's, I I think we'd like to see something. Um, and I would encourage Mr. Smith to talk to the abotters um and see if they could come to a happy place, so to speak, about what that um screening um would uh would look like.
Yeah, I think that's fair, and I I also think I'd like some, a little more concrete information. Industrial vehicles is the definition they were given in pass permitting. Heavy trucks, trailers, and construction equipment. Right now, and from what I can see, I think I count 30. So where I I'm 31, I'm 32. So we're I think we need a little more information on the vehicles and pieces of heavy equipment. I'd like to see a little more information on some proposed screening. And I that that's where on we, we have a um a Mr. Reynolds. I I would like to hear from you. We haven't gotten a chance to hear from you yet, I I believe, so.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Uh, Bill Reynolds, um, and I live at 48 Colonel Mansfield Drive. Uh, I have known Bob and Jandellin for a number of years now. My daughter is married to their son. Um, a general question for the board, and I I just trying to apply some logic here. How does, how does need uh and or?
Um, do we just, do we just lose Mr. Reynolds' audio? No.
All right. Can you hear me now? My my internet is cutting in and out. Who knows? All my neighbors on theirs. Uh, how? So it's my understanding, and Mr. Spade can confirm this with for you for me, that he rents out some of the bays on his property to their vendors. And I don't know when this began or i- i- if it is in fact true, but it's my understanding that he does. And if, in fact, that that happened at the same time he built this Quonset hut, doesn't that then increase uh the the intensification, if you will? And, you know, so it, does the board consider need? And then, you know, what are the other ramifications of what's going on with the rest of the property?
Sure, Mr. Mr. Spade, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. Uh, when I purchased the property, uh, there was, I I wanna say five or six more tenants than there are now. I've actually decreased the number of tenants over my five years of ownership.
I I guess in my mind, that speaks to intensification, but the the board would have to say differently.
Wouldn't be opposite of intense vacation, de-tensification? But there's less tenants?
Oh, I thought you said you had more. Uh, my internet cut out.
Yeah, sorry. We uh we have five to six less tenants now than we did five years prior. When I purchased the house.
And the number of trucks related to those tenants are included in the 30 that need to be on your property or not?
Uh, so I'm sorry, say that again.
And the and the number of trucks related to those tenants are are those included in what's allowed within the property or not? I guess I, the question is to the board. It doesn't matter if there's one tenant with 40 trucks, but.
So I'll I'll speak to that. Um, in the special permit um that this relates to specifically says, uh, no more than 33 industrial vehicles shall be located on the property, right, as that term is defined. It it does not specify, it does not specify who those vehicles belong.
Since it's all recorded.
Um, we would be, we would need Susan to watch uh the video, um, which is quite a long video at this point, um, but we would need her to catch up.
But I I think, I think, I'm in the same boat. I think we need to have the applicant prepare a plan that identifies how they turn, how they intend to mitigate the the issues with screening and other things, um, identify.
We may have lost Ed again there. I I'm quite certain what he was about to say is identify the other two things that we were looking for. Being and 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 Andrew and Cal, so please let us know if you have any questions on that front. What we are asking is I, some more specificity as to screening and so I need an inventory or or some more specificity as to the number of trucks and pieces of heavy equipment that are located on the site. So as a, for instance, when I'm looking at satellite, I see a boat parked on the site, which I don't believe to be a violation, but that counts towards your 33. I see a a large piece of construction machinery that's not a vehicle. I would count that towards your 33. Obviously, a truck or or a backhoe counts towards your 33. I'd like to understand what's always there and approximately what comes and goes in terms of deliveries and or subcontractors working at the site.
Could I ask Mr. Chairman, it just, because I I would really like to look at the same thing you're looking at. What what are you looking at?
So I am looking at the 1990 special permit.
Oh, no, I I'm sorry. I meant, uh, I meant, you you said you were looking at some uh overhead shot.
Sure. I was on uh Google Maps, looking at the property on satellite. The image can change depending on how much you zoomed in, but in certain views of the property, if you count the vehicles and large pieces of construction machinery, you are at or over the 33.
Okay, thank you.
Now, what what happened whenever that satellite image was taken isn't necessarily my concern. If, uh, you know, knowing what is present on the site on a typical day, especially in light of the fact that the applicant wishes to add about 20% to the square footage of the buildings on the site, is is my concern. I I think that's part of the factor. We'd we'd like to know the number of employees, like to know the number of vehicles or trailers or pieces of large equipment. And we'd like to see some idea as to the screening that is proposed. And and I can, um, you know, I could assure you, no one's going to come up with screening that's going to make these neighbors perfectly satisfied with the business that's going on next door. So I, that is not my expectation. Uh, mitigate mitigation, not not a solution, is what I am looking for there.
I understand.
Un- unfortunately, given how much time we've put in, I would suggest that you make a motion to continue to try to achieve that and get us that additional information. Would you, would you agree?
I I'm sorry, are you asking us?
Yes, I am.
Oh.
But, uh, Janine, that constitutes a a vote by the three of us, and it sounds like the applicant is uh agrees with that. We already have quite a full docket for June. But given that we've we've sort of shrunk down the discussion here and and given that, um, if the applicant thinks they'll be able to get us that information in advance of the hearing a little bit, we'll have a chance to review it. And hopefully, we can avoid adding too much time onto that already significant June hearing.
Okay.
Anthony?
Yes.
It clearly is to everyone's advantage if the applicant can um develop these plans and uh if there is any remote possibility of uh discussion with the neighbors and um recognize them, they, moving forward, we're not in a position to shut this this project, this this use down. Um, but if they, if the neighbors can uh work cooperatively, they may get the best solution as opposed to um a lesser solution.
I think that's a very good point.
Well, well, we, the applicant will get right on it. We'll get moving tomorrow.
Third, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So with that, just to confirm for everyone, the remainder of that application has been continued to our next meeting, which is scheduled for June 17th, a Thursday, Janine, at the select board hearing room.
Correct.
Okay, and um, and right now, things are changing a little bit. Right now, the plan is for that meeting to occur in the select board's hearing room with, potentially with the addition of a Zoom function.
Oh, excellent.
So thank you very much, and I, and and thank you to the members of the public as well, uh, for the for the comments and questions there.
Thank you.
Folks, we are going to move on to our fourth application. I hope you'll excuse me as I try to speed up our pace a little bit and still cover all of our content. And I appreciate the applicants that have waited patiently. We're gonna try to get to you in a timely fashion. Our fourth application brought by R. Farwell &amp; Sons of 38 Cedarwood Road in Situate, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL 48, section 6, and a 10.2 of the Situate bylaw to allow the construction of an addition to a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at 1 Summit Avenue in Situate. We have the applicant available, it looks like.
Yes. Are we muted or can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay. Uh, for the record, Steve B. Orkland, and I'm here representing Patrick and Kristen O'Brien. And as Anthony said, this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. It presently does not meet the side setback. It is approximately 10 feet from the side setback where 15 feet is required. Uh, it's a corner lot uh at 1 Summit Ave, and it's a approximately an 11,000-square-foot lot in an R2 district, which requires 20,000 square feet. So that being said, they are proposing an addition, which is in excess of the 20%, uh, which is why we're in front of the board under section 810.2. And they would like to do an addition that is 16 feet by 29 and a half feet. And they are increasing the setback on the addition on the easterly side of the property from the existing 10.7 to 11.3. So the new addition is further away from the property line, and just under four feet of that is within the setback. It is a two-story addition, and the increase uh in the total square footage of the uh addition is approximately 68.4% over the existing home. The existing home is relatively small. It's only 1,300 and 680 square feet, I believe. Um, and when it's done, it'll be 2324. And that's that's basically it. It's uh pretty much like the second application you had, and I think I'll answer any questions if I can, but it's reasonably straightforward.
He's very much reasonably straightforward. I I don't believe I have any questions. Uh, George?
Yeah, no question. I mean, it's very clear.
Steve, in the um, you're actually, you're not increasing any nonconformities, or correct? You're you're.
Presently existing. The new addition, the setback is gonna be further away from the property line. The existing house right now is 10.7 from the easterly sideline. The addition will be 11.3, so it is further away. But a portion of that addition is located within the 15-foot setback. So it's approximately four feet of that width is within the setback. So it's not really an expansion of it. It's an extension of a nonconformity along the same property line.
Right. And the um that's a function of the fact that the east side uh setback is a rear yard be- because of the corner lot?
No, what happens uh on the on the corner lot is if you go from uh the Summit Ave, Mordecai-Lincoln Road intersection, um, those both become front yard setbacks. And we actually meet both of those because the Mordecai-Lincoln Road exceeds the 30 feet, which is required. And Ross Engineering, who prepared the site plan, did the average on Summit Ave within 200 feet um from the intersection down on the same side of the street. And that average, uh, I know it's on the chart, but we, I believe it's like 14 feet is the average, and we are actually at 15 feet. That's 14.2 is the average, and we're uh existing at 15.4. So and we're not changing anything on the front of the house, so we actually meet that setback when you average it.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right. Do we have any members of the public that have any questions or comments on the application? If asked, please raise your hand. Does not look like we have anyone. Bob.
I'll make a moment.
Uh, oh, sorry, Ed. Uh, Bob or Neil, anything to add on this one?
Sounds good.
All right.
Good job. Good job, Michael.
Nothing at all on the zoning uh aspect of it. Uh, we'll take a look when it comes in for a building permit.
That's great.
Moved at the blue time that. Moved at the blue time that the, uh, proposed addition of Patrick and Kristen O'Brien at One Summit Ave. According to the plot plan for One Summit Ave, Situate, Mass., dated March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one by Ross Engineering, um, does not intensify, uh, or create any new nonconformities, and says, agree that it does, does not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and that the increase of more than twenty percent in living area is not is likewise not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Seconded. All those in favor, Bukary, I.
Six aside.
To the side.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Anthony, if I could take just a couple of seconds, because I didn't want to say this earlier before this hearing, but uh, I would also like to applaud Ed for his service to the town. And I've actually been coming in front of the board for in excess of twenty-one years. And, uh, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with Ed, and he is uh, very level-headed in all instances, even if we disagree. So, uh, Ed, you're going to be sorely missed by me, that's for sure.
Uh, thanks, Steve. And we have disagreed on occasion, but it's always been fun.
We we're back for the next one. That's what happens. So it's it's not going to be fun to, uh, come in without you here, although I know Anthony is probably going to be here for twenty-one years, and we'll be saying the same thing to him after twenty-one years.
From you, lift to God's ears.
Thank you guys very much.
Um, Anthony, Anthony, I'll take this one.
Thank you, George.
Had a break.
All right, we go to our fifth application. Right, yes. Uh, brought by Anthony L. and Lorie Amonte, co-trustees of the ALA nominee trust, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty-eight, section six, and or eight ten point two and nine fifty point two of the Situate Bylaw to allow the alteration, extension, or structural change in the form of four hundred and twenty square feet of additional living space above the first floor of the detached, pre-existing, non-conforming garage on a pre-existing, non-conforming lot at one twenty-nine Hummer Rock Beach in Situate.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Jeff DeLeese, Orenberger, DeLeese and Harris, um. I'm here, uh, without an engineer, right? And, uh, on behalf of my clients, the Almontes. This property is located in the R-three zone. It's not in a floodplain overlay. Um, as you indicated, we're, um, we're seeking to put four hundred and twenty square feet above the first floor of the detached garage. Uh, there's an old zoning decision that indicates that, um, the the structure is pre-existing, non-conforming. Uh, the lot area conforms to the bylaw, but the frontage and width are pre-existing, non-conforming. They're fifty feet and a hundred-foot zone. Um, the garage, uh, which is a detached garage, is non-conforming on the southerly side yard presently. It's one point six, uh, feet in an eight-foot zone. The dwelling on, um, the dwelling itself, uh, is non-conforming on the front yard setback, and that setback is actually calculated from Hummer Rock Beach. Uh, and that's twenty-five foot in the thirty zone. So the concept here is not not to expand any footprints, but to build, uh, up, uh, to build a second floor above an old garage. Um, the 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 two structures, uh, for all intents and purposes, are connected by a, uh, a deck. And, um, the whole concept here would be, um, to, uh, essentially keep that decking. Uh, and, uh, the gross floor area here would be to increase, um, only thirteen percent. Um, so we're not creating any new nonconformities, and it's also pretty straightforward. So I'll I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah, um, what's, you know, whenever we're putting living space over a garage, what what are we, what are we doing with this space? How does it connect and?
So, um, it's basically a single room. Um, there is not, uh, a kitchen. Uh, they, um, would be putting a half bath in there. So it's a single room with a half bath.
And access to that room, would you be able to traverse that second floor deck to get to that room? Would you just come up from the outside? How would that work?
It would, uh, I I believe, Anthony, that the access would be from the deck itself. I don't I don't, I'm 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 virtually certain that there's not a, um, a staircase, uh, from the garage into that structure.
So we're so we're looking at an additional living room or potentially bedroom that you access by going open air through the deck?
That's right. Yeah, they they, um, we talked about actually covering the deck and just just making it one structure. It's really, they're just trying to keep it simple. Um, there's no intention for it to be an accessory dwelling or a bedroom. Um, it's really just a place to watch TV and for the kids to, kids to go.
So that's great. And, um, and obviously, we're going up, or we're staying within the height requirement. I don't think that's, uh.
Yeah, without any question, yeah.
I don't have any more questions. Ed?
Jeff, does it, um, if you accessing it by via the deck, are we actually joining the garage to the to the dwelling?
Um, that's the intention, but it has, but, um, technically, I think, under the zoning bylaw, you you don't, and maybe I'm wrong. I know Neil Neil and Bob are on the phone, but, um, uh, that that's the intention, but I thought that if if you if you left the deck uncovered, then, um, then technically, you probably would not be connecting it. I I don't know the answer to that question.
I agree. Is it living space below the deck?
No, nope.
So the deck is, the deck is at grade, at first floor level, and the the proposed space is at second floor level?
No, uh, I believe the house is elevated onto piles, uh, and so would enter into the first floor of the house. I just wanna.
So the second floor of the garage is going to be the same grade as the first floor of the home?
I believe so, yes.
That and the assessment.
And that would make sense.
So it's it's due to the contour of the land, the the garage is actually, uh, below the first floor of the house?
Yeah, more the more the elevation of the house.
First floor is elevated above grade.
Yeah.
And the end grade is level.
Okay.
I would hope that elevation meets current FEMA and code requirements.
It's it's not in a, it's not in a floodplain, so I know that you can't issue a building permit if, uh, if it doesn't meet the building code, so.
Right, right, right. We're not, we're not there yet to have that discussion.
All right. George, anything to add?
Nope, all set.
Okay, uh, any members of the public with comments or question on the one twenty-nine Hummer Rock Beach application? Please raise your hand. Okay. I would make a motion on the application of the ALA nominee trust that the proposed second-story garage addition shown on the Atlantic Coast Engineering Plan dated March twenty-second, twenty-one for the property of one twenty-nine Hummer Rock Beach, that the board find that the proposed addition does not create any new nonconformities, and that to the extent it intensifies any existing nonconformities, that those intensifications are not substantially more detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood.
Seconded.
All those in favor, Bukary, I.
Six aside.
To the side.
Thank you very much. Um, if if you'd like, I'm happy to write the decision for you.
We would like that very much, attorney DeLeese. Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, we're gonna move right along to our sixth application brought by David and Katrina Deruboe of Forcliff Estates in Situate, requesting a special permit finding in accordance with MGL forty-eight, section six, and section eight ten point two of the bylaw to allow the construction of an addition to the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling at four fifty Road.
Good evening. Uh, William Eats from, uh, Drohan, Toulton, Oregon, uh, representing the Deruboes. Um, can you hear me all right?
Yes, yes.
Just getting some weird feedback. Um, you should be in receipt of a letter, uh, withdrawing this application, uh, that was sent on May thirteenth. I believe we had confirmed you had received that letter.
We have received that letter. Yes.
And we are, after consultation with the, uh, building commissioner, we are, we're re-re submitting. I believe we already have resubmitted uh, for the following meeting, uh, on seeking different relief.
On seeking different relief. Okay, now I understand. So you are. So we need to republizize. Is that right, Janine? Yes. Well, I would like to apologize to you folks for having you wait patiently. I hope you enjoyed the show.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Okay, so I I feel I feel somewhat terrible, but I think that we are not going to hear you tonight because your different relief requires a republication.
Yes, there's a separate, I believe a separate application was submitted, so yes.
Okay. Well, uh, thank you very much. I would make a, uh, a motion to allow the withdrawal.
My second.
Second without prejudice.
Yes, absolutely, without prejudice. We have the separate application, so we have a motion. It's been seconded. Um, all those in favor, Anthony Bukary, I.
Six aside.
To the side.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, absolutely. We're gonna move on to our seventh application, bought brought by Gregory and Lisa DeCassilis of Bennet Street, Newville, Massachusetts, requesting a special permit of finding in connection with forty-eight, section six, and eight ten point two of the bylaw to allow the alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to the pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling on the lot at one forty-two Hummer Rock Beach Road, excuse me, Hummer Rock Beach, by relocating said dwelling on the lot and constructing an addition thereon, which completely eliminates the existing nonconforming setback and does not intensify an existing nonconformity, but does increase the gross floor area by twenty percent. I hope who drafted it when I almost run out of breath while reading the explanation.
Just trying to earn earn my wage, I guess.
Very thorough and accurate. Thank you. Please, please.
Sure. So for the record, Jeff DeLeese, Orenberger, DeLeese and Harris, um, Greg Morse of Morse Engineering, uh, prepared the site plan, but he cannot be in attendance today, so once again, I'm on my own. Um, we're in the R-three zoning district. We're not in a floodplain overlay. Um, this is a significantly oversized lot for Hummer Rock. Um, many of the lots are are probably, majority of the lots are less than the required ten thousand square feet, and uh, this lot here is fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. Um, uh, the lot itself is nonconforming with respect to frontage and width. Um, it has a fifty-foot, uh, frontage and fifty feet in width, basically, also similar to many of the lots in Hummer Rock. Uh, the existing dwelling on the property is, uh, clearly a pre-existing, non-conforming building. Um, it has a historical significance. The two streets um, in the vicinity are na- I I I think are named after, at least one street is named after the, uh, owner or the builder of the house originally. Um, the house is technically located in the velocity zone, and, uh, the dwelling um, is not presently in flood compliance. Um, it's long overdue. Uh, any storm now could take it out, I suppose, uh, to raise the dwelling on the piles, uh, uh, is overdue and and for both safety and and coastal conservation purposes. The concept here, um, would be that since we would be elevating the house on the piles, we were, um, proposing to move the house and kind of rotate it a little and move it further into the lot, further beach, put it on piles, and then to construct in addition onto that. Um, and the addition portion would be the portion of the building that would be closest to the beach. So, um, the detached, uh, there's also a detached building, a a small, small detached accessory structure on the property, which is proposed to be raised. Um, and it's it's, uh, nonconforming on the northerly side yard. Um, and that's at three point one feet, I believe. So we'd be eliminating that nonconformity there. The dwelling, um, presently is nonconforming on the side yards. So it's presently six point five feet off of the north side yard and four point five feet off of the south side yard. So in addition to removing the nonconformity on the accessory building, uh, we're proposing to remove the nonconformity on the dwelling's northerly side yard uh, and bringing it to the eight-foot compliance. Um, we are also proposing to, uh, while we're not eliminating a nonconformity on the southerly side yard, to improve the setback, uh, or or make it less nonconforming uh, on that side. Um, so it would be four point nine feet, whereas it's presently four point five. So, um, we are proposing to construct the third floor onto the, um, proposed relocated and reconstructed dwelling. It would be compliant with the bylaw's height requirement. Um, and so we're not creating any new nonconformities. I feel like I've been talking forever.
Nope. I think I think you've covered everything. Um. You know, we got a, uh, it's a, it's a large house. Obviously, we have a sizable increase in square footage. But as we've had the discussion before, these houses, these lots are going to turn over, and they're, they cost what they cost, and we're gonna have to get them up out of the floodplain. You don't want to do that for a small addition, and, um, you know, I don't, it's not, uh, it's not like it doesn't fit in the surrounding neighborhood. Obviously, we're going to be close enough to some other homes. We're gonna have some extra boxes to check with the building code, but I think you more or less covered everything for me. Other George?
I'm, um, I'm good.
Yeah, it's clear.
Bob or Neil?
No, all good here.
Sounds good.
All right. Do we have the audience that has any question or comments? You could raise your hand, or the group's shrunk enough, or you could just speak up and we'll figure it out. Doesn't look like we have anyone. You can close a public comment, and you have a motion.
Move to find that the addition, the relocation addition of the dwelling at, um, one forty-two Hummer Rock Beach, um, as per the, uh, per, uh, by Gregory and Lisa DeCassilis, as per the plan by Morse Engineering, um, dated four eight twenty-one, um, shall not create any new nonconformities, shall reduce existing nonconformities, and to the degree that it may, uh, intensify, um, it is not significantly detrimental to the neighborhood. Um, it is not significantly detrimental to the neighborhood, substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, and the increase in square footage, uh, likewise is not substantially detrimental.
Seconded.
Can I still?
What? I seconded. Uh, all those in favor, you carry eye.
Six, a, sign.
Two, a, sign.
Um, I'm happy to write this decision as well, um, if, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Always like a draft. Jeff, you always do nice drafts.
Say, say, say that again?
You always do such a nice draft. It's, uh, it's a pleasure to read them.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Can I, um, Ed? I'm kind of heartbroken that you're leaving the board, uh, because you, uh, well, I, I just think that what you guys do with the zoning board, all of you, is really important because it's, it's really, it's really, it's super, it's, it's not just a volunteer job, because I think that, um, these are really complex issues, and it's an odd area, and you really need a specialized way. And you're kind of like the guy from Cheers, like, I'm going to miss you because you're, just because you're not going to be there. Um, so, I wish you the best. I know you're moving, um, but, you know, every month, I'm definitely going to miss you here, so, good luck.
Appreciate it, Jeff. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Take care. Everybody, have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Um, all right, there are, I mean, Ed, we can't say it enough, but obviously, it's coming on 10 o'clock. I hope, uh, we'll get, uh, we'll get a text going or something, uh, especially as things have opened back up. I'd love to grab a beer.
Yeah.
Such a big help to me. You're going to be sorely missed in town, and so we'll be on this board.
Not to worry. I'm going to, I'm going to still be around, but, uh, just not living here. Um, we still have some approval of minutes, correct? The April minutes?
One month, yes, April.
Yep.
I moved to a, to, uh, to, uh, accept the minutes as mail.
Seconded.
All those in favor, you carry eye.
Six, a, sign.
Two, a, sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, my friend.
And Janine, thanks for standing on top of us. I've, I'd make a motion to adjourn the hearing.
I'll second it, and I will, um, comment that I enjoyed very much the time on the board. If there's anyone still in the public listening, uh, it's a great gig. Get out there and, um, support the town. It's, uh, you can learn a lot, um, and recognize the limitations that the law puts on us.
Top of the spot. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Seth, Brianna, Ed, thank you, everybody. Thanks, Brianna.
That's all. Thank you.
Uh, just a, just a note for the board itself. You, you're, you're-